We've got about one more minute. Well, folks are still coming in from the waiting room. I'm going to give it about thirty more seconds. I know as soon as I call the meeting to order, there will be another couple of folks coming in. Okay, well, I have seven thirty on my clock and anybody that decides to come a little bit late, I will monitor and just let them in. Happy December first. I hope everyone had a nice Thanksgiving holiday and a nice extended weekend. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. I would like for you to join me as we stand some said in the Pledge of Allegiance. However, keep your phone muted at this time. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, if we could have members of the council, please take a moment to unmute while the clerk calls roll.
Admet.
Present.
O'Brien.
Here.
Beniziano.
Here.
Bessassi.
Here.
Yes, this.
Present.
Sinoika.
Here.
With six present and nobody absent, there is a quorum this evening. Members of the audience, I'm reminding you that these proceedings are being recorded for current and future broadcasts over the city's cable television channel as well as other media outlets. Again, housekeeping items being with public comment, you will be afforded the opportunity to provide public comment for those of the public who are joining us in the conference line or in the conference room. You will be able to do so so long as you provided your contact credentials and the subject matter for which you'd like to speak about by the deadline, which is noted on this evening's agenda. Members of the public who are present in city council chambers listening to this meeting, you'll also be afforded the opportunity to provide public comment in accordance with the procedures that are applicable to public comment at an in-person meeting of the city council, which is namely, members of the public must have signed in before the start of this evening's meeting. And as always, any written comments that we receive, they will be read during that time as well. Moving on into the first part of the agenda, the first order of business is to approve minutes from a previous meeting, and that previous meeting is November seventeenth, twenty twenty Committee of the Whole. Is there a motion by show of hand to approve these minutes? Thank you, Alderman Diastis, and thank you for the second, Alderman Sinoika. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to these minutes? Seeing none, the question is, shall the minutes be approved? Will the clerk call the roll?
Sinoika.
Yes.
Admet.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Bessassi.
Yes.
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 It's six in favor and none opposed. Those minutes are approved. Moving on here to the mayor's report, last week Cook County Board of Commissioners had unanimously voted to waive late fees for property tax payments for both installments. So basically, that means the first round, which is due on March second, will have the late fees waived until May third. And the second round, which is due on August second, will have the late fees waived until October first. Another item is next Monday on December seventh, there's going to be a special briefing between the Cook County or Illinois Department of Public Health and the governor's office discussing COVID-19 vaccine distribution plans. So I hope to be able to come back to the council with more information on that and how that's going to impact us here locally. And then lastly, we all know on November twenty fourth, Mr. Cannon resigned from his seat as alderman of the first ward. While his actions were certainly abrupt, I was disappointed when I read in the paper that he blames me for his failure to commit to the remainder of his term. However, I was pleased to hear from a number of residents who had already reached out to fill the vacancy by the very next morning. In this last election, the residents have really demonstrated their desire to see progress and change in our community. They also decided they want a council that really represents them. Our council is becoming more diverse in its makeup and definitely with its perspective. Our focus has shifted toward making decisions that affect our future, promote accountability, and aiming for greater inclusivity. Now, I want the residents of the first ward to know that they will be represented, and it wouldn't be fair to leave them without a voice in the interim. So that said, I've already selected a candidate who I'll be appointed pointing during the next city council meeting. The candidate I've selected will be a refreshing seat and refreshing addition to the seat and the council. They, most importantly, have integrity, empathy, and they value many of the ideals that most of us on this council already share. They'll be dedicated, approachable, and most of all balanced in their judgment. As I've said before, we don't necessarily have to agree with one another on every topic, but we do however need to speak on behalf of the residents that we represent and not on our own personal opinions. I know this candidate is going to do just that. In any event, we're going to continue moving forward promoting a culture of accountability and continuous improvement. We'll keep pursuing initiatives that position our city positively while we focus on our place in regional development. And above all, we'll use this opportunity to act as catalysts so that all city council members that come after us better reflect the citizens they represent and the future of those residents that they want to see. With that, are there any other ward reports this evening? Alderman Sinoika.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In light of Alderman Cannon's resignation, I will be serving as alderman at large for a very specific issue regarding the Dongate Homeowners Association, which is mostly located in Ward one, but a portion on the south is also located in Ward seven. The president of the homeowners association, Patty Berry, reached out to me along with some other Ward seven residents regarding increased but dangerous wildlife in the area. Thanks to Chief Nowacki for all of the materials that he sent on the options with those residents. So we'll be working together going forward to address those issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Sinoika. Any other word reports this evening? Okay, if there aren't any other word reports, we'll move on to opening up the floor for public comment for the next twenty minutes. There are two signatures on the sign-in sheet, and I just want to go ahead and remind everybody that each person addressing the city councils shall state their name for the record. Each person shall be granted no more than five minutes of the allotted twenty minutes in order to address the city council. Discussion shall take place in a professional manner which displays mutual respect, and of course, profanity shall not be used in any form or manner. That said, the first name that I have on the list is Chris Irwin of Colliers. Chris, if you're on the line, you can unmute now.
Yeah, hi, Chris Irwin, Colliers International, working on a couple of properties in Rolling Meadows for the city and here for any questions and any updates.
Wonderful, thank you. The next name on the list is Renata Berza of Shelby's. Renata, if you're on.
Yes, good evening, mayor and city council. My name is Renata Berza, and I am the licensing and compliance manager for Shelby's. I want to thank you for your consideration of the first reading tonight, and we are here if you guys have any questions. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. Moving on from public comment, then we'll go into items that are pending. The first one we have is line item A, ordinance number two zero dash five three. It's to approve an ordinance confirming and extending the state of emergency within the city of Rolling Meadows due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Is there a motion by show of hand to adopt this ordinance? Thank you, Alderman Beniziano, and thank you for the second, Alderman Sinoika. Is there any discussion on this? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk call the roll?
Admet.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Bessassi.
Yes.
Yes, this.
Yes.
Sinoika.
Yes.
Six in favor and none opposed that ordinance is adopted. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is the consent ordinances in for first reading. This consists of two items. It's item B and item C. Does any alderman by show of hand wish to remove an item from the consent agenda for ordinances? Seeing none, as the chair of this council, I declare it an order for a single motion to consider the two ordinances in one motion without debate. Is there such a motion? Thank you, Alderman Sinoika, and thank you for the second, Alderman O'Brien. That brings us to ordinance number two zero dash zero zero at this time. It's to approve an ordinance confirming and extending the state of emergency within the city of Rolling Meadows due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Line item C, ordinance number two zero dash zero zero at this time, authorize a special use for video gaming cafe and variation from section one two two dash two nine D three of the city code, allowing refuse disposal areas that are not screened on all signs for the property located at twenty one sixty four Plum Grove Road, which is Shelby's Plum Grove Shopping Center. This is the first reading. The question is, shall the ordinances be moved forward for second reading? Will the clerk please call the roll?
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Bessassi.
Here we go. Yes.
Yes, this.
Yes.
Sinoika.
Yes.
Admet.
Present.
With six in favor and none opposed, the ordinances will be moved forward for second reading. This brings us now to new business, which is a motion to approve payment of bills on warrant for December first, twenty twenty. Is there by show of hand a motion to approve the warrant? Thank you, Alderman O'Brien, and thank you, Alderman Beniziano, for the second. Is there any discussion by show of hand? Seeing none, the question is, shall the warrant be approved? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Beniziano.
Yes.
Bessassi.
Yes.
Yes, this.
Yes.
Sinoika.
Yes.
Admet.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, the warrant is approved. This brings us now to the resolution section of the agenda, and this consists of only one item. That's item E. It's resolution number two zero dash R dash one 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 to authorize the renewal of professional services of Colliers International, doing business with Colliers International for the purposes of marketing and selling city property. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution? Thank you, Alderman Diastis. Is there a second? Thank you, Alderman Sinoika, for the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the resolution be? Alderman Beniziano, do you have a question?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thought maybe my raising hand wasn't working. So this was a question for Joellen and Director Horn. With the renewal of this contract, I know that we had spoken individually with the council or you guys had about what are kind of our expectations were with moving forward with this contract. Has that been conveyed with renewal of this contract, or are you guys still working on that?
Mayor, would you like me to respond?
Oh, yeah, either you or Director Horn, whoever has input.
Sure, thank you. I'm not, Director Horn advised me just prior to the meeting that due to his move, he may be having internet instability, so I will step in as needed for the meeting. Thank you. We did just complete our final conversations on Monday, so we do have some information as a majority of the council to to consider, but I think as far as the action is considered for tonight, there's really no harm in moving forward with the actions for Colliers to continue the work that they're doing. If we want to synthesize the information that we've obtained from the council and do something different with that, we can certainly work with Colliers separately or on the side to accomplish that through the existing contract that we have.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Anything further, Alderman Beniziano?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. With Alderman Beniziano's questions, are there any other items for discussion on this subject? Seeing none, the question is, shall the resolution be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Bessassi.
Yes.
Yes, this.
Yes.
Sinoika.
Yes.
Admet.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, the resolution is adopted. All of this brings us to other business and reports, and there are no appointments by the mayor this evening, or are there any proclamations? Does the city clerk have anything to report?
No, I don't.
All right, then that'll bring us to city staff reports. City staff reports, first item is community items of interest. Manager Crumstock, I will defer to you on that when you are ready.
Thank you, mayor and city council. Obviously, we do have a few to name. I have two others just to add to what's in front of you and the agenda. But we do want to thank and appreciate everybody who's donated so far to the United States Marine Corps Reserve toy program that is conducted here at City Hall. We do want to mention that residents may deliver new unwrapped toys to the drop box here at City Hall at thirty six hundred Kurtoff Road or at the Rolling Meadows Library at thirty one ten Martin Lake. Toy donations are accepted until Friday, December fourth. So they will pick up their final pickup from the city or Rolling Meadows on Monday morning, first thing in the morning. But we do appreciate, they've already been here twice, picking up about five boxes worth of toys each time. So it's greatly appreciated, everything that's been donated before. And this Saturday, December fifth, the Rolling Meadows Police Department will be conducting a food drive outside of the Jewel Osko Foods located at three thousand Kurtoff Road from ten AM to two PM. It's greatly appreciated, all that you can donate. For this year, all donations will be going to the Palatine Township Food Pantry. We do want to mention that the city in Vitale has scheduled another blood drive for Wednesday, December twenty third, from one PM to seven PM at City Hall, the council chambers. There really is a need for social distancing. Appointments are needed for this event, and walk-ins will only be accepted if the room is available. Please contact Vitale at eight seven seven two five eight four eight two five to schedule a meeting or an appointment for donation. And the wearing of face coverings masks are required for this blood donation. We do want to mention that blood really is needed, especially with what's going on in hospitals and emergency rooms and everything that's associated with COVID-19 and regular items that are going on at this point in time. The need is so great because usual areas that they could do donations, schools and others have closed down those locations. So anywhere that Vitale or American Heart Association is able to do a blood drive is greatly appreciated, especially during this time. We do want to mention that the city Swank and Elgin Recycling are conducting the annual holiday light recycling program. Our collection boxes are here at City Hall. Items that are accepted include the following items, mini lights or what are called Italian lights, C seven lights, C nine lights, rope lights, LED lights, really any kind of lights with any kinds of colors or lengths or anything like that. What cannot be accepted are garland, live greens, wreaths, or non-recyclables, or the person who dropped off a big reindeer today. It was one of those big inflatable ones. That does not count as a holiday light recycling program item. The program does run until February twelfth, twenty twenty one. We do want to mention to people, please visit the new Rolling Meadows Business Buzz website. You can either go to the city website itself at www.ciderm.org, click on the RM Business Buzz link, or you can go directly to rmbusinessbuzz.org. And you can also look for some coupons. There's some restaurants on there. There's Bussy Flowers. There's Hallmark on there that has a coupon too, but additional items that are on the coupon section. We do want to mention, because it is the season, the fire department reminds people, keep the wreath red. Display is on both of the fire stations. The program is a public awareness initiative that is really trying to encourage residents to protect their families by preventing fire caused by seasonal decorations. The wreaths hanging at the stations begin the season illuminated with all red bulbs. Any fire in Rolling Meadows caused by a holiday decoration will be represented by a white bulb. For more information on this holiday safety program or any kind of item that you have for the fire department, please call them at eight four seven three nine seven three three five two. Obviously, December is one of the months that we do our e-news and views. This can be found on the city webpage. This is the electronic issue that is in conjunction with the six times a year produced paper news and views that we have. This December issue, we do talk about the police department holiday food drive, the blood drive, the holiday refuse collection schedule, the RM Business Buzz. There's an article that talks about revised zoning code, the tentative twenty twenty one community event schedule that was mentioned and talked about at the last committee of the whole meeting, and then the handyman program. And there's also a short blurb regarding snow removal frequently asked questions. Regarding that, we also do want to mention that City Hall and Public Works will be closed on Thursday, December twenty fourth and Friday, December twenty fifth, in observance of the holiday season. On Thursday, December twenty fourth, garage garbage and recycling will be collected early. Please have your refuse and recycling out at the curb no later than six AM. The Friday collection, this will happen on Saturday. Also, because we do need to reiterate that City Hall and Public Works will be closed on Friday, January first, in observance of the near year. Refuse and recycling collection will be delayed one day for Friday collections only. This will happen on Saturday. We do want to mention that Public Works will provide Christmas tree pickup service to all refuse customers from January second to January eighth. Resins should remove lights, tinsel, and ornaments and place trees at the curb, cupside facing the street, under regular refuse collection day. We do want to remind people that please shop, dine, and order in Rolling Meadows. It is more important than ever during these times. It is significant to remember our big boxes, restaurants, and small businesses. One item that I do want to add on is that on Saturday, December twelfth, noon to two PM, the Knights of Columbus will be having a food collection. They're calling a food pantry outreach ministry that will be happening. It's also a drop off for food, another way of giving back to the community. It does happen at St. Clair Church Parish Center, which is at the west door at thirty nine hundred Meadow Drive. And again, that will happen on Saturday, December twelfth, from noon to two PM. It is another way to do for the food pantry. The last item that we do want to add, obviously from all staff and obviously to the council and all to the residents and businesses, now that we are in December, we wish encourage everybody a safe and happy season's greetings, and we hope everybody stays safe and well. With that, those are items of interest.
Thank you, Manager Crumstock. Then if that's the rest of the items of interest, then we'll move on to the traffic review committee report from November twenty twenty. Director Horn, if you have good enough internet, floor is yours.
Thank you, mayor. I think I can handle this report. Nothing to update. We had no meeting in November due to lack of agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Way to keep it concise and brief. Moving on then from there is December eighth, Committee of the Whole draft agenda, and Manager Crumstock, I'm going to defer to you.
Thank you, mayor and city council. Obviously, before you, December eighth, we are going to be canceling the committee of the whole. Items that were going to be discussed on there are moving to January. We're just not prepared for that. And also, with back-to-back-to-back-to-back meetings, obviously, in November and December, it's just prudent to do this at this point in time.
Okay, thank you. Then let's just move on to December fifteenth, city council draft agenda.
Thank you, mayor and city council. Before you, the draft, December fifteenth, that will have one inclusion to it. So obviously, what we will have is the COVID-19 second reading continuing the state of the emergency. We also will have the second reading for Shelby's that you just gave first reading. At this point in time, we will have the first reading for a new state of emergency COVID pandemic reading. We'll pay some bills. We will see if we have a resolution ready, potentially another ordinance dealing with some liquor license cleanup. During other business on reports for a mayor appointment, as you said, Ward one will be mentioned. Then we have items from staff regarding community items of interest, the October twenty twenty financials, the November twenty twenty new businesses, and then obviously, at this point in time, a closed session for personnel.
Wonderful, thank you. If that wraps it up for the draft agendas, both committee of the whole and the upcoming city council meeting, then this brings us to matters not on the agenda. By show of hand, are there any matters not on this evening's agenda? Alderman Diastis?
Thank you. On November eleventh, on behalf of the several residents, I asked about the possibility of having the city remove leaves from the curb. At that time, I was told it would be on a future committee of the whole meeting. As December is canceled, I guess my question is, will it be on the January committee of the whole meeting?
Manager Crumstock, are you going to speak on the progress of your agenda setting, or do you want me to?
We're still working on that for with Public Works, so we do have it scheduled. It's just getting it ready for all the other items that we've had this discussion in the past and just pulling it together with obviously a new team in Public Works with Public Works Director Rob Horn and Assistant Director Joel Carlton.
Okay, I just didn't want it to be forgotten or misplaced somewhere, so I'll look for it in January, and if we don't, can't have it by then, hopefully in February. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Bessassi. I see your hand is up.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to mention the survey regarding reinstating the HIPAA program. It is now online, as well as I believe it was in the water bills that just went out or will be going out. So I encourage residents to fill those out and send them in and give, it'll help us make some determinations on how we're going to proceed with that program. Pretty much it. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Looking forward to seeing what the feedback is from that. Are there any other matters not on this evening's agenda by show of hand? Okay, then if not, I will look for a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Alderman Bessassi. Thank you, Alderman O'Brien, for the second. The clerk, please call the roll.
Diastis.
Yes.
Soneka.
Yes.
Admet.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Bessassi.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, this meeting is adjourned. Have a wonderful evening, everybody. We'll talk to you in about two weeks.
Thanks.
Bye.